Good evening. I'd like to have the reorg meeting called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next, I'd like to call up our district clerk, Deb Carpenter, for her oath of office. Deb, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
the duties of school district clerk
the duties of school district clerk
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Now, I'd like to invite re-elected board member, Robin Scott, for her oath of office, which will be given by Deb Carpenter.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
the duties of a Board of Education member
the duties of a Board of Education member
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I get approval of the reorganization agenda? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, motion passes. Next, we have our election of our president. Can I ask for a motion for board president?
Mike, I'd like to make a nomination. At this time, I would like to take this moment and nominate our peer, Robin Scott, for board president. During her tenure on the board, she has exhibited the leadership skills necessary to serve our community. Robin has served on the Monroe County School Board Association Information Exchange and Legislative Committees. She is an active member of both district level and board committees such as Audit Oversight, Town-Village School District Leadership, and Community Engagement Teams. Robin exhibits the core values of our district. She is student-centered, she leads by example, she works collaboratively with all members, and her decisions are always thoughtfully and carefully contemplated. Along with her experiences, her passion and dedication for our community and education makes her an ideal candidate for this position.
Thank you, Renee. Can I get a second? Any discussion or questions? Any other nominations? Can I get a vote by show of hands for approval of Robin Scott as our president of the Board of Education? The records show it is unanimous, six-zero. Congratulations, Robin. You are declared president for the 2023-2024 school year. At this point, we'd like to give the oath of office to our new president by our district clerk.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
the duties of the Board of Education president
the duties of the Board of Education president
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Robin. And this is the very best part of a reorg meeting. At this point, I now shift all responsibilities to the new board president. I am no longer responsible for anything that happens.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve all of you. And now, we will have the election of our vice president, beginning with a denomination from Sarah Pelucio.
Thank you, Robin. It is my pleasure to nominate Mr. Jeff Casey as our Board of Education Vice President. During his time on the board, Jeff has shown a deep understanding of the board's roles and responsibilities relative to the district. He possesses excellent leadership skills that will aid in his abilities to support Robin and the seven of us together as we navigate our way through the upcoming school year. I am confident that Jeff will serve our board with the utmost respect and civility necessary to allow for our continued success.
So with that, we've had a motion for the nomination of Jeff Casey. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, both of you. For Renee. So are there any questions or any further nominations? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you, the nomination stands. Thank you. Congratulations, Jeff. With that, the oath of office will be given by our district clerk.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge
the duties of the Board of Education Vice President
the duties of the Board of Education Vice President
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. You have reviewed and read the appointments for the 2023-2024 year. Sorry. We would like to give our oath of office to our Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Michael Piero. And our district clerk, Deb, will do that.
Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the state of the United States that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge
the duties of Superintendent of Schools
the duties of Superintendent of Schools
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mike. Thank you. And next, we'll have the appointments. And our board has reviewed all of the appointments and their packets. And with that, may I have a motion for approval for the appointments for the year 2023-2024 school year?
So moved.
Thank you. There's Jeff and Emily. We appreciate it. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. The motion carries. Next, we will have designations. You've reviewed the designations for the upcoming school year. And with that, is there a motion to accept the designations? Renee, is there a second?
Second.
Sarah? Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll have authorizations. And they will be done with a motion, beginning with a motion from Emily, and second, from Dave. Are there questions? The most, all in favor? And the motion carries. Thank you so much. Next, we'll have Board of Education Committee appointments. Firstly, for Monroe County School Boards Association Committees, Executive, Mike Piero, our superintendent, and myself will serve there. For Legislative, Sarah Pelucio is our co-chair, and Emily Kay is our alternate. Labor Relations, David Burke will be the lead this year, and Emily Kay is an alternate. Information Exchange, Kim Hughes is the lead this year, and David Burke is the alternate. For Board Leadership is myself and Jeff Casey. For our Steering Committee is Sarah Pelucio, the co-chair of Legislative. District Board Committees, Legislative Liaison is Sarah Pelucio. Our Teacher Center Policy Board is Emily Kay, serving year two of three. Our Town-Village School District Leadership is our president, vice president, and superintendent. Our Audit Oversight Committee is Renee Sanchez-Cazacos, Robin Scott, and Jeff Casey. Our District Advocacy Committee is our superintendent, the president, and the Legislative Liaison. And our Community Engagement is led by Renee Sanchez-Cazacos, and Emily Kay, and Kim Hughes. And our BOE Insight Articles Communication, the lead this year will be Sarah Pelucio. Serving along with her will be Jeff Casey and David Burke. Thank you. So that completes our reorg meeting. And we will now begin our call to order our regular meeting. May I have a motion for approval of our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Jeff with the second from Renee. Okay, from there, do we have to, are there any questions for that? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor for approval of the agenda? And the agenda is approved. Approval of our minutes from June 13th, that's our next action. Is there a motion to approve those? Emily and Dave is second. Are there any questions regarding or corrections for those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? The minutes are approved. Thank you. So at this juncture in the year, we don't have reports from our MIXPA meetings. But dates to remember, our, this date is very pivotal in our community. June 11 is our summer workshop. And of course, we're at our regular scheduled reorg meeting. On tomorrow, there will be an additional summer workshop meeting. On August 8 is our next regular scheduled meeting at 5:00. Next, we'll have the annual adoption and signing of the Board Governing Mission and Communications Agreement. And we have, we will be reading those. We will have different parts to reading, starting with our Board Governing Mission. And I will begin that process, and you will hear from all of our board members. This is the Pittsburgh Central School District Board Governing Mission. The Pittsburgh Central School District Board of Education serves the students and families in our community by partnering with the superintendent and setting strong, clear direction and policy for leading the district's strategic and operational planning, monitoring and evaluating the district's educational, administrative, and financial performance against clearly defined standards and objectives.
Ensuring that the district possesses the necessary human, financial, and other resources, creating opportunities for collaboration amongst established community partners to contribute to the district's effectiveness.
Valuing and promoting positive and productive relationships within the district and across the broader community, protecting the privacy and confidentiality in matters involving students, personnel, legal, and contractual matters.
Valuing and promoting a positive and productive workshop, or I'm sorry, working partnership between the BOE Board Leadership and the superintendent, understanding the difference between the Board of Education's governance role and the superintendent's operational role, and embracing the value in both.
Providing professional development for engaging board members in the governance process and developing the general skills of all board members, including but not limited to skills related to communication, business and finance, advocacy, et cetera, promoting active participation and engaged teamwork among all board members.
Annually conducting board self-assessments and goal-setting while actively advocating in areas that are in the best interests of the district, practicing the highest level of ethics and integrity.
Thank you. For being in agreement with that. And next, we will have, I'm going to have to make a motion. Oh. So is there a motion to approve our Board Governing Mission? Renee and Sarah? So there are no questions, are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? So this is approved. And next, I want to just share this with you. Thank you. We have our Pittsburgh Board of Education Communications Agreement that we will all read. The PCSD Board of Education members agree that we will act and make decisions not as a collection of seven individuals, but only as a unit comprised of its members.
We will assist one another and our constituents as they navigate the protocols and processes for communication with district administrators and staff.
Issues and concerns raised by constituents shall be timely shared with the board leadership and the superintendent and with individual board members as appropriate.
We recognize that others see us as always wearing the board hat.
Conversation for the purpose of influencing others or sharing opinions on matters before the board, with the exception of public board meetings, is prohibited.
We will be respectful listeners, modeling the civility we expect from others during board meetings, at school-related functions, and out in the community.
We will communicate at board meetings and functions by respectfully sharing ideas and perspectives.
The Board of Education President is the spokesperson for the board. However, all board members will be accessible to listen to community members' feedback. So we will have a motion to approve our communications agreement? From Dave, and with a second from Sarah? Are there questions on this? All in favor then? Thank you. And this is approved. Our communications agreement is also approved. Thank you so much. Next, we will have our financial report from Mr. Vespe.
All right, thank you very much for your consideration as the acceptance of the Treasurers Report. Again, the same areas that I've noted throughout the year. If you look on page three of the General Fund Revenue, you'll see higher-than-expected county sales tax, interest earnings, and then the refund of prior-year services with BOSIs, where we spent additional funds at the end of the year, and that resulted in additional revenue. Again, we operated very well on the food service side of the operation, and I can tell you now, as we're closing out the year, that we use those funds to buy some additional equipment because of the necessity to really finish the year out, you know, on an even budget. So, you know, more to follow, obviously, with the year-end and audit, but that's an update for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept our Treasurers Report?
So moved.
And second, Jeff and Renee. So with that, are there questions for Mr. Vespe? Okay. All in favor? And the Treasurers Report is accepted.
All right, for your consideration is an agreement for both items two and three for security guard services and district printing services. So this is a unique situation where we're asking the board to consider granting the purchasing agent, The Latitude, to award a contract as soon as the RFPs have been reviewed and responded to. And that's in anticipation of a need in our print shop due to a retirement, and then the need to do an RFP for security guard services because it exceeds a certain dollar amount, and we hope to have the service in place prior to, you know, the start of school. So this is really a safeguard or precaution, depending on how the timing works, to our August 8 meeting. And again, it would require separate action on each.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the district's security guard services request for proposal? Sarah?
Second.
Second from Jeff. Are there questions? All in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. And the next motion, is there one for the district printing services request for a proposal? Emily, thank you.
Second.
And Dave, second. Are there questions for that? All in favor? Thank you. This motion is carried also.
Okay, very good. For your consideration is the Campus Construction Management Proposal. This is our long-term construction manager. This is the approval of the contract for the capital project. Now that everything's been approved, in order for us to move forward in the next phase is to approve the contract, and that'll be the same thing with SEI Design Group next. The campus construction contract has been fully vetted by legal. The SEI Design Contract has been fully vetted by legal and is in process of just having those changes made at SEI. So I'm confident and comfortable, so we have full legal review on both agreements and dollar amounts.
Thank you. So is there a motion to approve our Campus Construction Management Proposal? Renee, and seconded by Sarah? Are there questions regarding that? Well, then, all in favor? The motion carries. The next motion that we're asking is for a motion to approve the SEI Design Group Agreement? Is there a motion for that? Dave, and seconded by Jeff? Are there questions regarding that? And all in favor? Thank you. This motion carries also.
All right, next is the consideration of a tax surcharge settlement. The good news is that there's no back payment that goes as part of this agreement. We would agree to reduced assessment valuations going forward. So no refund, per se, but still board's approval in terms of the assessment reduction for the next two years. Again, recommended after legal review.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the tax surcharge settlement?
So moved.
Thank you, Jeff and Emily. Are there questions regarding that? Then all in favor? And this motion is approved.
And finally, the consideration of the transportation contract with Monroe and BOSIs.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the Monroe One BOSIs transportation contract? Sarah, and seconded by Renee. Are there questions regarding this contract? Well, then, all in favor? And this contract is accepted. Human Resources Report, Mr. Clark.
Good evening. First for your consideration is the Professional Staff Report. We have two managerial confidential salary adjustments, two administrator appointments. We have 10 certificated staff appointments, one certificated staff part-time to probationary appointment, two certificated staff part-time to full-time appointments, one certificated staff correction of tenure area, one school-related professional correction, one school-related professional auxiliary appointment, one managerial confidential appointment, one school-related professional resignation for retirement correction of date, one certificated staff resignation, one certificated staff resignation correction, three school-related professional resignations, and one school nurse resignation.
You've heard Mr. Clark and reviewed the Professional Staff Report. Is there a motion for acceptance? Renee, thank you. And is there a second? Dave? Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Clark? Okay, all in favor? The Professional Staff Report is accepted.
Thank you. Next for your consideration is the Support Staff Report. We have one clerical appointment, one transportation appointment, four custodial maintenance appointments, four custodial maintenance resignations, and we have one custodial maintenance retirement with 17.3 years of service.
You've heard and reviewed the Support Staff Report. Are there, is there a motion to accept that? Jeff?
Second.
Second, Sarah? Are there questions? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. Next for your consideration is the yearly approval of the per diem substitute and special salaries for the 2023 through 2024 school year.
Is there a motion to accept the per diem substitute and special salaries for 2023? Yes, David and
Second.
and Renee. Thank you. Are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Thank you. Finally, for your consideration, with the updated handbook for our Maintenance Custodial Mechanics Unit. It's a three-year agreement, and similar to other collective bargaining agreements and handbooks, we're looking at dealing with the issue of compression and increased minimum wage in order to help with the recruitment and retention of staff.
You've reviewed the approval of the Maintenance Custodial and Mechanics Handbook? May I have a motion to accept that? From Emily, and seconded by Renee. Thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. That is approved.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have our Special Education Report from Ms. Woods.
Good evening. We have recommendations from the Committee on Special Education and the Committee on Preschool Special Education on the consent agenda.
Thank you. And next, we'll have our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to congratulate Patrick Irving, who's here actually in our audience. He will be our next athletic director. And I would like just to hear your daughter's age?
She's five.
Five years old. Amazing. She's been just behaved perfectly. I'm not sure what you bribed her with. But, but welcome to our Pittsburgh family. We're excited to have you in the athletic role. You're welcome, and thanks for being here. There is not a need for an executive session this evening. During our last meeting, you heard during a public hearing a review of the PFD Volunteer First Responders Property Tax Exemption. At this point, I would like to offer it for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the Volunteer First Responder Property Tax Exemption? A motion by Sarah, and seconded by Renee. Are there questions regarding that? If not, all in favor? The motion carries.
I'd like to thank the Board of Education for putting in 12 hours of volunteer work today, starting at our board retreat this morning. This is the first year in several years where we've been able to focus our strategic initiative moving forward on instruction. We've spent several years on, last year, on health and safety. We went through processes, procedures around our physical plant, how to respond to emergencies. Then before that, we were focused on, unfortunately, COVID protocols, and before that, how to have our elementary students come in to school full-time during the pandemic. So it's been quite a while since we've been able to keep our eyes on best practices as they relate to instruction. So for the full day today and for half the day tomorrow, our focus has been on engaging students in learning by increasing rigor and authenticity through the use of instructional moves that will allow for students to be involved in complex and challenging thinking, along with practices that create a welcoming and affirming environment, and curriculum and dynamic structures that require integrative thinking and a global perspective and involvement. So today's work was basically all learning about what we mean by rigor and authenticity and engagement, along and engagement, along with several instructional practices, along with various content that will allow us to hopefully provide our students with the highest level of experiences here at Pittsburgh. Tomorrow, we'll be more focused on implementation. We have a little bit more new learning, but we'll be discussing best ways to roll this out and implement, along with how we will assess our progress along the way, and ultimately, how we will know when this becomes operational. So want to thank the board, central office team, and the other seventy invitees to the workshop. Those that attended were part of our district planning team, our instructional leadership council. Our inclusivity advisory committee facilitator was there, along with parent reps from PTSA, all administrators through PDAA. It was a real productive day, and again, it just feels really good to focus on instruction, as it's been a while and necessary to focus on some other important areas. So I want to thank you for that and look forward to continuing our work tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, is there approval for consent agenda?
It's removed.
Thank you, Jeff. And is there a second from Dave? Thank you. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor? And the consent agenda is approved. At this time, is there any old business? Is there any new business? Next, we will engage in public comment. First, we will have William Skuse come forward.
I received pushback from the superintendent on my statement to the board at the June 13th meeting for allegedly taking something out of context and presenting misinformation. Although the superintendent has an unlimited amount of time to say whatever he wants, whether it's true or false, right or wrong, accurate or inaccurate, I am only allowed three minutes to make my statement. Because of this, I have to be very efficient with what I have to say. If you'd like to give me thirty minutes, three hours, three days, or three months, I'd be happy to make my comments in all the context that exists. In fact, if you'd like, I'll debate any or all of you for as long as you'd like, anywhere you'd like, on the topic of the pornographic books that you've placed in our children's hands. All I would ask is that it be livestreamed and recorded to prevent any manipulation of what is said. In the superintendent's lengthy statement defending the pornographic book titled "This Book is Gay," he quotes the book's review committee's decision that says, quote, "The importance of safety, physical and emotional, is also emphasized throughout Chapter Eight, titled 'Where to Meet People Like You.'" It goes on to say, "While the discussion of dating apps is concerning to some, and passages from the section are included in the objections filed, the author again takes care to emphasize the importance of safety in very practical ways." Is the review committee and the superintendent saying that it's okay to teach young boys how to meet strange adult men through an internet app? Are they saying that teaching young boys to use these apps is how to show them acceptance? Is the review committee and the superintendent saying that it's okay for a grown man to violate a freshman in Sutherland High School as long as he wears a condom and practices safe sex? These don't sound like statements of people who are interested in the safety and well-being of the six thousand children in the Pittsburgh School District. These are statements of sexual predators, of groomers, of pedophiles.
Next, we will hear from Michael Shaughnessy, if he's available.
At the end of my comments during the June 13th meeting, Superintendent Perro offered a clarification of the Pittsburgh Central School District policy concerning cell phones. As stated, the Pittsburgh Central School District Middle Schools' policy in 2023 was for students to always keep their cell phones in their backpacks and lockers. See page thirty-three of the Cawkins Road Middle School Handbook, 2022 to 2023. Cellular phones have the potential to be very disruptive to the school day. We therefore strictly limit the use during the instructional day from 7:35 to 3:10 p.m. It also states it is important for students and parents to know that if the school becomes aware that a cellphone or a communication device holds content that may be inconsistent with state or federal law, for example, presence of lewd and/or pornographic text and/or pictures, and depending on the circumstances, the school administration may be required to confiscate the device and hand the device over to law authorities. So no pornographic text and/or pictures on cell phones, but okay for books in the Pittsburgh Central School District libraries. An interesting hypocritical policy. Beginning of quote, "As the birthplace of the modern movement for LGBTQ rights for New York, New York is proud to protect, defend, and affirm our LGBTQ community," end of quote, Governor Kathy Hochul. To Kathy Hochul and to our Pittsburgh Central School District Board of Education, at whose detriment does this ultimately impact? Yes, it's all the children in total. Governor Kathy Hochul, in late June, signed a nation-leading legislation to protect and affirm the LGBTQ community ahead of her participation in New York City's annual Pride March. During the reference Pride March, participants were videotaped, stating, "We're here, we're queer, we're coming for your children." Several thousand assembled and attended in a peaceful fashion, of course, but one major headline was, "We're here, we're queer, we're coming for your children," chanted continuously by a group attending the Pride March in New York City. Where does the school district and Board of Education think this is all going, and do you believe that there is dangers and risks at stake for our children and students in our community and across our country? I sincerely hope you do not think this is harmless. This is another door-opening opportunity for Big Pharma to push gender-altering drugs on children. Start taking some responsibility as a board in your positions that you've been elected to by the Pittsburgh community. I have four books here that are currently in the Jefferson Road Elementary School, found under the search category transgender people. Reading levels are K to three and one five to eight. Again, as stated last month relative to the four other books, what's the point of having these books in the Jeff Road Elementary School Library and the Pittsburgh School Libraries? To have them in a school library does not make any sense, since the books are available in the public libraries.
Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy.
The level of confusion instilled or potential confusion illustrated in these books is incomprehensible and exhibits a lack of general concern by the entire student community. What's the point of this approach if the elementary schools have now had the board, how can the Pittsburgh Central School District and the board live with themselves while not addressing significant and disgusting library book matters? It's totally irresponsible.
Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. We hear you. Our last public comment is from resident Amy Ord. She is unable to attend this evening. Thank you, sir. So I will share you a reading from her. This is regarding MTSS models and SEL behavior and mental health. From Ms. Ord, "It is hard to come to board meetings to tell the school district things they most likely do not want to hear, especially when that someone is gasp apparent. I recently heard the lecture from the director of a government agency say there are days he goes into his extremely high-ranking boss's office and gets screamed at. He can't worry about giving information that his boss wants to hear. He has to give the real information. I also cannot worry about being liked. I would like to address the following. One, simply put, your MTSS model, the models that look like triangles and have different levels of one, two, three, in social, emotional learning, your MTSS model and behavior and your MTSS model and mental health are all squished together and need a lot of attention to be workable. Two, who is accountable for this model? You have administrators with no background licensure or extremely limited knowledge of MTSS implementing. Three, I assume this is costing the district a lot of money. Why not do it right? Four, when you attempt to socially engineer your entire population of students by untrained individuals, risk of harm will occur. When implementing SEL under the CASL framework, which you appear to be following, politics come into play, and any real learning becomes indoctrination. These are not light words, but if you think about it, it's true. Five, legal and ethical complaints are vast, from California to Pennsylvania to New England. Parents, individual school districts, and teachers are suing over being forced to implement SEL under the CASL framework, again, which you appear to also be following. The notion of needing parental consent also seems to be at the center. I won't write them all, but they are happening. Number six, recent Supreme Court cases, 303 Creative versus Alainus, have ruled in favor under the basic notion of you cannot force any individual to say, perform work, or take on beliefs that go against their own. I'm sorry. Thank you. That concludes public comment. Oh, this communication from Ms. Ord has been sent to all of our board members, and we are aware of her concerns. Thank you.
Robin, if I, just super quick, I really, I do appreciate and respect. I don't want things to be adversarial with regards to public comment or differences in opinion. I feel really strongly that our job is to support the six thousand students that come through our doors. It's our job to provide an affirming environment. It's our job to support students of all different levels of diversity, regardless of what it is. We're a public school that places a premium on making students feel valued in our building. Regarding the books, I shared before, and believe it or not, I do appreciate differences in opinion, and they're not shoved under the door. They're looked at with a critical eye. There are four more books that we're reviewing right now, and that's that checks and balances that I think have merit. When, other things, just to dispel, I'm not sure where gender-altering drugs, the role that they play in school, I've never talked about them. I've never seen them come up in conversation here. I can't speak to protests and what's shared there or what the governor speaks to. I can say probably almost any protest. A lot of things are shared that don't speak to different beliefs that we have. We're doing our very best to support students. We care deeply about them. We want them to do well. We are concerned about their mental health. We want all students to feel included. We want parents to feel supported. We're dealing with many social issues, political issues, that schools have never had to face before. So we default back to our value on being student-centered, making sure when students walk through our doors, they feel that they have the support and love needed to be successful, and we will continue to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And is there a motion for adjournment? Thank you, Sarah and Renee. So all in favor? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.